Welcome to the Lander County Commission meeting down Board of Battle Mountain in Austin. Board of County Highways and Commissions. Patsy, welcome to be with us in the back, please.
Yes, we're turning the salute to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have a moment of silence. All right, we're gonna go ahead and move forward. Lander County Commissioners may break for lunch from 12:00 PM to 1:15:00 PM. Any agenda items may be taken out of order, may be combined for consideration by the public body, and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Commission reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended. Patsy?
Thank you. I did attend the Kingston Town Board meeting on the fifteenth. And of course, the big news there is that the firefighters fundraising picnic is going on, and that will be held the first Saturday in August, August seventh. So any of you that can make that down to help is always appreciated.
All right.
Thank you.
I attended a hospital board meeting, it was just general business. There wasn't anything that was out of the ordinary.
Yeah, no report.
All right, moving forward. On staff, staff reports, meetings, conferences, seminars attended?
I have no report.
Everything is on the agenda, and I will be presenting for Donnie because he is out today. He's not doing well.
And I won't be asking for a litigation meeting later on in this meeting.
Okay, very good. Moving forward, public comment, for non-agendized items only. Persons are invited to submit comments in writing and/or attend and make comments on any non-agendized items at the board meeting, if any. The discussion of those comments are at the discretion of the board. All public comments may be limited to three minutes per person, again, at the discretion of the board. Reasonable restrictions may be placed on the public comment based upon time, place, or manner, but public comment based upon viewpoint may not be restricted. Do we have any public comment?
Muted. Unmuted.
We're moving forward to the consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the Board of County Commissioners with one action without extensive discussion. Any member of the board or any citizen may request that any item taken out of the consent agenda discussed and acted upon separately during this meeting. Consent agenda materials are available at the Lander County Clerk's Office for viewing, and copies are available for a nominal charge. So one, approval of July twenty-second, 2021 Agenda Notice. Number two, approval of May twenty-seventh, 2021 Meeting Minutes. Number three, approval of June tenth, 2021 Meeting Minutes. Number four, approval of June twenty-fourth, 2021 Meeting Minutes. Five, approval of July eighth, 2021 Meeting Minutes. Six, approval of July twelfth, 2020 Special Meeting Minutes. And number seven, approval of payroll change request. So do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve one, two, three, and seven.
I'm sorry, one, two, three, and?
Seven. Well, there are no payroll changes. I meant that one, two, and three.
I'll second the motion, one, two, and three.
All right. Brian made the motion, Patsy second. All in favor?
Aye. And I want to say thank you to whoever has got their minutes caught up.
Yes, thank you very much.
Yeah, very nice.
It's very nice. Exactly. We're finally getting those all off, so greatly appreciated. So number one, for discussion of possible action to approve/disapprove the payment of bills, we are going to pull out check number two-one-two-four-four-four for point S. So aside from that, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the remainder of bills.
I'll second it.
All right, so Brian made the motion, JR second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so a motion to pay check number two-one-two-four-four-four. I'll make the motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second the motion.
So Kathy made the motion, Patsy second. All in favor?
Aye.
And I abstain, as made to my employer.
All right, very good. So do you want to go straight to number twelve?
Yeah, I believe Commissioner Clark said he was on his way, but he just had an E-surgery yesterday, so I'm not sure if that is slowing it up. If we should reach out to him on the phone, or if we would just like to proceed. It's up to you guys. So, but we do have to get that done here since we did.
So you guys tell me what, do you want to go ahead and do number twelve?
Let's do number twelve first.
Okay. Okay. So for discussion of possible action to approve/disapprove ordinance 2021-003, adding new title in chapter forty-two to Lander County Code to prohibit all county government entities and businesses within the county from requiring patrons and residents to provide proof of vaccination of COVID-19 vaccination passports. If approved, the procedure contained in NRS 244.1001 must be followed.
Commissioner, this, I was asked to do something up in this regard, and I have, and I researched across the country on ordinance and laws that have been developed along these lines. And I came up with something I thought was fair for this county. And I didn't want to go too far because if we went too far, we would be doing exactly what we're accusing the state of doing, and that's going beyond their authority. And I don't want to go beyond our authority. So I came up with a simple ordinance, and if you guys, this is a proposed ordinance, so it has to be read by title. Whoever's making the motion, it needs to, the title needs to be read, and then the motion has to say, our, we, the, our proposed ordinance, that we adopt this proposed ordinance. And then I can put, since we're doing it before ten, we can put it in the paper, and it'll save us two weeks if we can get it done by ten. So it's really simple. There's only three parts to it. And I think this accomplishes what the intent of the Commission was.
Yeah.
But you tell me.
My, the only question I had is a quick question. Is the authority to, on businesses, to what they want, like what they require in their businesses? Are we just that same question? Are we overstepping by saying you're not allowed to ask for this? Or how does that whole thing work?
We, we control the businesses by giving them business licenses. And what we're saying in Lander County, that no business, and, well, primarily the county government does not require a vaccine passport. And a vaccine passport is not required in Lander County. Now, a private business can require that of their employees, but they cannot require it of a person that comes on from the street.
Oh, because that's public.
And the public.
Okay.
Now, we can do that, but we can't interfere in what they do with their own employees.
Okay, that's my only question.
And I had no intention of going to.
No, no, I know, I just didn't know. That's my, and I didn't think that, but I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, there's a big, yeah. One would be challenged in court, and one, we have the authority to do that.
All right, very good.
And I think the whole intent of this was to try and uphold our citizens' constitutional rights.
Right, exactly.
Right, so. I like it. Thank you, Ted, for doing it. I was the one that asked for it to be brought up, so.
So do you want to read it, Ian?
Yeah, we just, we just have to read title, correct?
Just read it by title and then make the motion and call it the proposed ordinance.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we, actually, an ordinance adding new title, chapter eight, or Title Eight, Chapter Forty-two, to the Lander County Code says to prohibit all county governmental entities and businesses within the county from requiring patron and residents to provide proof of vaccination for COVID-19 and all other matters probably relating thereto. So I would make the motion that we adopt this proposed ordinance.
So you have a second?
I'll second it.
Can we say adopt, or we just make a motion on the proposed ordinance? Because we adopt the ordinance later.
We're approving the proposed ordinance.
Okay, so I'll amend my motion to?
Yeah, the adopt comes the next step, so we just approve.
Yeah, so that we approve the proposed ordinance.
All right, so the second of the amended, okay. So Brian made the motion, JR second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So good to go forward. All right, so let's get with that one. So now we're going to do number eleven, right? Is that where you guys are wanting to go?
Fifteen.
Fifteen first, okay. All right, for discussion of possible action to approve/disapprove the memorandum of understanding, understanding between Lander County and Battle Mountain Chamber of Commerce. All right.
According fortune for the record, it's just for our yearly lease for the room that we rent to you guys at the Civic Center. So I have no idea, like, what's the true amount, because I would do about fifteen different things. But we got an invoice in the mail from the Finance Department for $10, so I don't.
I have. I have.
So I apologize, but I believe it should be a dollar a month. I think it should be twelve.
But there's nothing in our MOU that states that.
No, but all of our other leases, that's what we've been through, is we went to a dollar a month that way, that if it's ever terminated. Now, I don't know of what legal speak to what they're doing, but typically with all of our other leases, we go a dollar a month.
And then this is, these are the only two that I can find, like, on our QuickBooks. So for 2019 and for 2020, they both were $10. So, I mean, we can pay whatever. I don't care if it's $12 a month or whatever it is. I just brought a check for ten because I don't know what it is. We just need to be okay that we can.
So what is it? Is it a dollar, so it's supposed to be twelve?
It's supposed to be $12 for the year, a dollar a month that way. If it ever is terminated, it's an even number that we.
Okay, but we don't want it in the MOU.
Yes, we do. And if you approve this, you can ask my office to put the $1 a month in there and bring it back to you for signature. Or, or just approve it, have me make the modifications, and then allow you to sign it.
Okay.
Okay. I have a couple changes on the very first page. The MOU shall remain in effect for a period of three years.
So I never got any of that stuff, so I don't know what all is in the package.
No, the date is incorrect. We need to correct the date. It's effective July, the first day of July 2021.
Through June thirtieth, twenty-two, right, the fifth of the year?
Yes.
As for three years.
So.
Oh, it's for three years, so I've gone to, oh, okay.
Yes, it's for three years, but our date is incorrect. And also, our address is incorrect. Back on page four, we need to correct that.
Yep.
And add the dollar a month. I can make those changes, and you can have me bring it in front of you, or?
Just correct it.
Or you can just correct it and put in your motion that you'll sign it after the question.
So, yeah.
I'll make a motion that we approve the memorandum of understanding between Lander County and Battle Mountain Chamber of Commerce to be added the rent amount of $12, and the change on the date and our address, and authorize also the signature sign when that is completed.
Okay, I'll second the motion.
Patsy made the motion, Brian second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, very good, thank you.
Can I give you guys, or can I give the check for this one for $10, and then bring one back for, what would it be, $26? Can I pay for all three years?
No. You can't until?
So I can just pay one year at a time?
No, you can't until we sign it.
You guys, okay, so. So since I have an invoice for $10 from you guys, can I give you the check for the $10 today?
Is the invoice for the, for past years, or?
No, it's for the, that's why I was so confused, because it's for the 2021, 2022.
We're going to do a separate invoice, new invoice.
Okay.
Yeah, but it's not, hold on. Right, no, okay.
Okay.
One year at a time.
Okay. So I'll just give a check for $10. Okay. Can we give it to Jacy first, you guys?
So we're gonna hold up for just a minute.
Well, welcome, Art. We didn't expect you.
I didn't either. It's Justin.
All right. So now we're gonna go back to eleven, is that right?
So I believe Ms. Buffington in presenting that, she sent me a text message that she is on her way. She is just moments away. She has twin boys that were keeping her busy last morning.
So.
I'll just go to two.
Oh, yeah, let's go to number two. And for discussion of possible action to approve/disapprove the reimbursement of Kathleen Ancho for the purchase of the headstone for Dr. Peters, they, the?
Now, Ms. Kathy, aren't we gonna table number two?
Yeah.
And then I'll bring that back before you guys, with, as a payment, as opposed to reimbursement?
Yes. Yes, and I contacted her today to come get ahold of Shannon Burden, to get a W nine, to get all that. Because she has something else, she said that something else for the county as well that she's done. So she will get all that taken care of.
You bet. But it'll be, it'll be a future agenda item, so if we can just remove this one, and we'll bring it back as.
All right, yep, good to go. All right, so moving on to number three. For discussion of possible action to approve/disapprove the donation and placement of a plaque in honor of Sam Sandoval and his 25 years of service to Little League as president to be placed at the Battle Mountain Little League Fields.
So this was brought to me by a few community members, and I think Ms. Ancho is aware of it as well. I believe Sam had been a big part of the Little League here, and we wanted to do something similar to what we did at the dog park over there, the same plaque with the same stand, and put it there as opposed to dedicating a field. Just put it at the fields.
Yes, I agree. And so for, because this is the all-school reunion, one of the community members has just bought a temporary plaque for now to give the families, and then once that the time has been able to order and do whatever they needed to do, then we'll do something different that time of day. Since everybody was going to be in town, they just, that person purchased a plaque for them, so.
Great.
All right.
I'll make a motion that we approve the donation and placement of a plaque in honor of Sam Sandoval and his 25 years of service to Little League as president, and to be placed at the Battle Mountain Little League Fields.
Very good.
I'll second that.
All right, so Brian made the motion, Art second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So for discussion of possible action to approve/disapprove the designation of Veterans Park Space at Lander County Facilities.
Okay, Commissioners, on this one, you came in front of the Commission before, and? And when it came before, it was worded differently. And I'd mentioned at that time that there is, there is no authority to, to ticket or enforce what they wanted to do. But it's worded this way now, that we can't enforce it, but we can certainly put it designated at parking spots. So, but there's no enforcement. You have to understand there's no enforcement. It's not like.
We just hope that people honor it, and if they don't, there's nothing that you can do, unfortunately, so.
So it's more like an honorary rather than enforcement, which is. So there, as long as you know that difference, and then, then the county manager here can designate a number of spaces. And I'd like you guys to discuss where you want them to go at.
That was my question, what county facilities are we looking at?
Yes, so that, that's what needs to be discussed. Do we want to include Austin? Do we want Kingston and Battle Mountain? And what buildings or what premises you want these honorary parking spots to be located? That makes sense.
The other thing we had talked about was whether we were going to have disabled veteran or just regular veteran. So I think, yeah, and I think regular veteran is.
I just think it should be veteran, yeah.
Yeah, just veterans, so, yeah, because the disabled can use the disabled part, right?
Yes, yes.
So I think we're okay with that.
And that can be enforced.
Yeah, I don't, the only thing that we have actually in Austin, because we don't have really designated spaces, and the one where we do park, the Convention and Tourism Center actually owns, so we, we go with the ADA, and we have the one disabled parking. But I think that would be infringing if we, if we try and do that. So I don't know of any other place that we really need to do it in Austin, but.
But I wanted to bring it up. I wanted.
Right, I mean, it needs to be included in the conversation, but I can't think of why we want anything in that area.
I can't either.
But as far as our buildings here, and I don't think we need a lot. I think it's just the point that we want to honor them, you know, two or three.
I think three, I think three places, that's what I'm thinking. The courthouse, the rec center, and the civic center.
What about the park?
What about the park, the one park?
There's no designated parking spots there.
That's right.
But there are at the rec center, the civic center, and the administration building.
You can put some on the backside of the rec center, the, you know, where on the backside of the park as well. They tie into the park and the rec center.
Backside splash pad.
Yep.
How about the sheriff's office?
I don't want to intrude on that.
Well, and we really, we don't have a problem parking there. I mean, there's never a crowd and meetings and things like that.
I'd rather keep that. I'd rather separate that.
Okay.
Robert, you want to jump in? I think you're a vet.
Real quick, for the sheriff's office, there's no issue. We have ample parking in the public area, and if they want to put two or three slots next to the current handicap slots, that'll just be fine.
Okay, so there's four possibilities.
It just, it just reminds the veterans when they pull in that they're being thought about by the county, really. And I think that's a big part of it, that we appreciate it, and we want to honor them in that way. As far as the number on each one, I think that would make a difference on where we're putting it, if we have places for three, or maybe there's only places for two. So we'll kind of leave that up to our county manager when you're looking at that, but.
You bet. I'll bring it back.
At least two or three, right? At least two or three spaces.
Oh, yeah.
So, so the motion has to include the four locations.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we put veteran parking spaces in four locations. The courthouse, the sheriff's office, the rec center, civic center.
And the civic center.
And civic center.
All right, good.
I'll second the motion.
So Art made the motion, and Brian second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, very good, thank you.
And number five, if we could table that as well, Robert said they couldn't make it, but they could make it to the next ones. They had some things coming up.
All right, so we'll table number five. So number six, for discussion of possible action to approve/disapprove the write-off patient balances for uninsured, underinsured patients.
Morning, Neela.
Good morning, Neela Fuller for the record. And really, I need, what I need is, Brandy wants us to do a policy for billing and everything, the manual policies and procedures. So I just need you guys to tell me, most of our people are low income, and so what do you want me to do with outstanding balances? How long do you want me to hold on to them? I just don't, we can't make that decision, so.
Well, I believe that the balances that they're asking to be wrote off are balances that have been held on to for quite some time.
Twenty nineteen and 2020, when our previous county manager was here, he wrote us, wrote a bunch off for us. He had me write it off after about a year. And those were before we were able to start billing at all. And so through all of this transition, learning how to do the billing and stuff, it's just basically, we weren't able to bill insurance until the end of 2019, and then I didn't actually get my certification for billing until 2020. And so it was just in all of that shuffle, the learning and everything. That's where those large amounts are, and they won't be that big again. We just need to know, like, if we have somebody that has an $85 balance, how long do you want me to continue to bill them?
What's your recommendation, Neela?
Is what I would like to see, is yearly us bring that total balance back in front of this Commission, get it, get it approved by the Commission for that balance to be wrote off every year, once a year, maybe. If you guys want to set a date on that year, you know, so we can come back before you at that time and then ask for the balance to be wrote off for the Commission's more in the loop of what is and what isn't being wrote off in the counter.
Are you comfortable with the year?
Yeah, a year is good. I know, well, there's some amounts, so like VFC, people that qualify for VFC, which is Vaccines for Children, that are state-funded. We're only allowed to bill them twice in 90 days. And then if they can't pay the $20, we can't bill them again. So that, if you guys can just give me permission to write off that $20 per vaccine because I can't bill them again, that would be the only one that would be a regular. The other balances are if somebody comes in and they're low income for STD testing, and they can't afford the testing, or birth control, or, you know, that type of stuff.
That would have to be.
If they want to take care of it.
Yes, yes.
It's the help nurse.
Definitely.
We can't do that. We can't separate that. That would have to be included in the yearly thing.
Okay.
So we could.
So just hold on to it for the year, and then just bring it in.
Yeah, they can adopt a process that every year you bring in a new list.
I can do that.
Neil, are there any programs available for people that are in their bad spot?
Well, and we do, we do have a sliding fee scale. So they bring in proof of income, we put them on that. But there's still those people, even if they qualify for this sliding fee scale, sometimes they still just don't have.
Well, we can't deny it.
And I would say 90% of our people are low income.
That comes with it.
So, yes.
So I would think that after July, just to keep it, you know?
Okay, so every July, just bring it in?
That's all right with everyone else. I think we just kind of keep it in schedule with the fiscal year, and everything, and close everything at the same time.
Okay.
That's all right with everyone else.
So, so on your motion, I'd like you to, to include that everything that's previously been, is a year old, should be written off, and here on after, it should be brought in front of the Commission on a yearly basis.
Okay.
The amount that we're asking for today is $2,524, correct?
Yes. Oh, can I ask, so do you want it in July, or do you want it at the end of June?
At the end of June.
Okay. Just, I wanted to clarify, so I know what to put in my.
Big first meeting in July.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Just a physical year, so we make sure that we have a, that's a clear year.
I'll make a motion that we approve the write-off of $2,524, and that all future bills be brought before the Commission the end of June to be approved for the year. That sound all right?
Yeah, that's right.
So Brian made the motion, Art second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. We're gonna go back to our. Number eleven? All right. Good morning. All right, so moving forward.
Morning, guys.
So for presentation by identity education to use the old courthouse, also known as Battle Mountain Grammar School, to approve/disapprove interim into release of this purpose.
Commissioners, in a previous meeting, you authorized me, along with Amy and Bertolo, to look into different, different organizations, or basically to purpose or repurpose the old courthouse, the old grammar school. And along those lines, Ms. Buffington came and gave a presentation to Amy and myself and Bertolo. And, and she made a presentation to us that she would like to make some type of a private school at that, at that premises, and that if we grant her a lease to do that, that during the, the period of the lease, we can still be working on the courthouse and, and fixing it up like we wanted to, that'll fit the, the historical building guidelines. So, she presented this to us, and Amy and I and Bertolo are making the recommendation to you to proceed if, if you like the presentation. So, I'll open it up to Kim so she can make this presentation.
Kimberly Buffington, we've, several families in town saw the need for some educational options, so we thought best to approach that and create a legal entity to do that, and we have created a nonprofit education association. It's a private education association, and it will afford families an option for educational purposes. And when we were tasked with, the very first item is finding a location that's suitable, that's safe, and would serve the purpose of what we saw, that building came to mind first and foremost as being vacant. We certainly could breathe some life back into it. We could certainly be tasked with handling the utilities and the expenses therein that would be associated with the building being open, and so that would also come off your financial side of things. We would take that on. And we're, we're starting small, but that would give us room to grow. Certainly, we would, we would seek a lease that's at least through June thirty of next year, just so we didn't find ourselves upended in the middle of a year with kids having instruction and-
I'd recommend a three-year lease to start off.
And that would be attainable.
So, what kind of changes or improvements do we need to make to the rooms that you would be using?
Starting off small, we can work with any open space in the building. We would probably stay within, you know, one floor to begin with, and then only expand into the rest of the building as needed. So, I have not done a walkthrough of the building as of, at this time, but certainly we could go look. I don't anticipate there's going to be anything major other than-
Cleanup?
Cleanup, yeah.
I haven't been in there, I don't know, I heard we had-
Bertolo, if you approve that we proceed with this project, Bertolo has the, the con crew ready to muck out the building. There, Amy has thirty-six thousand dollars left on the money the commission gave, gave to that committee a couple of years ago, and that thirty-six thousand dollars will then be utilized to buy carpet and, and stuff to get this up and going. So, there will be no immediate out-of-pocket expenses, except with the con crew, and-
Which we pay regardless.
Yes, which we do that anyway. But thirty-six thousand dollars that Amy has can be used for carpets and, and anything else.
So, what grades are going, are you guys going to try to?
So, initially, K through six. We at first thought K through eight would make sense, but we want to make sure it's manageable, and we do right by the kids. So, we're going to stick to K through six parameter until, we're going to fund through private donation, grants, fundraisers, so we will be completely, and tuitions. There'll be, and we're trying to keep the tuition small to keep the students, as many students as possible can attend. But since it's nonprofit, there will have to be a cost attached to attendance, so.
So, there's two things we need to do. One, I'd like Amy to go on the record with her recommendation, because she's, was involved, an integral part in making this an historic site, and she can explain about the thirty-six thousand dollars. And then if you decide to approve this, to proceed with this, as soon as the documents are completed by Ms. Buffington, then I will do up a lease and bring it in front of you. So, right now, we're asking you to, if you decide you want to go in this direction, we're asking that you give us permission to proceed with the lease to a entity that really doesn't exist yet.
The, the entity actually does exist.
Okay, but then to proceed with an entity that we have yet to see the paperwork on, and once I get the paperwork, I will put that on paper with the lease, because it'll be, it's my understanding, it's a charitable institution. Therefore, Lander County has the right to, to do this, absolute authority.
And we have confirmed also on our side that we, we have, we have the legal right to enter into a lease. Even though it's a private education association, we absolutely can enter into a lease in public domain.
So, my only question is, how do you accredit so where you are, so when they have to integrate back into the school system? How do you do that?
So, we have been advised, all parents will fire, file their homeschool affidavit with the school, with the lesson plans. We're going to use a lesson plan that's already created nationally. The school district has already, they already are aware, and it's one that's common, and so we didn't want to reinvent the wheel, and we went with something that's already set. And then, so if they ever do, and those are, are kids by grade, so they'll have a curriculum by grade, so they should be right on track, should they decide to re-enter the public education system.
Now, if, and I'll let you respond, so then we'll have one more question. So, if we have somebody, for example, from the school that parents need extra tutoring and things like that, are they, will they be able, with obviously paying so much, I say, I need, I need my kid, need some help, will they be able to utilize this as well?
My understanding is that homeschool students do have access to resources through the school district for IEPs, I mean, traditionally in the public school system, there are IEPs, that if those resources are available, the homeschool kiddos get to take advantage of that. They do have access to the intermural sports programs, just like, just like a regular homeschool student. And they are classified as homeschool.
Testing, Amy. Will, will you guys do the mandatory testing that the state has, or are you guys exempt from?
There's no requirement for that, it's just like a traditional homeschool environment, so that's why we went with a homeschool curriculum that's already proven. So, they do not have a requirement to test in the public system. Upon re-entry, the public school system may require testing for placement, so they would, they would then have to meet those standards, but go on, go ahead.
Commissioner Clark, Amy is not part of the presentation. She is part of the committee that you appointed to make a recommendation to, to this presentation. So, I'd like Amy to, to give this, her thoughts, since she's been in tune with this project for quite some time.
Amy Nelson, I'll keep it brief, but my whole objective years ago, when we started this, was to breathe life, I like your wording, breathe life, and back into that building, so it doesn't sit and decay. And also, I think it has the potential to attract people in, you know, coming to work at Twin Creeks. And the, and their, you know, the wife looks around and says, what are the opportunities? Wow, Battle Mountain has a rec center, wow, Battle Mountain has beautiful schools. Wow, we are a constitutional county, and wow, there's options for schooling. And I, I believe that it's a good thing for Lander County as a whole.
There's a poetic beauty in this building reverting to a school-
Absolutely.
Since it started like that.
I worked at New Horizons in Vegas in nineteen sixty-seven, six, under Sister Teresa Smith, and my observation about the private schools is, you have smaller classrooms, and it's more individualized. Can't get better than that.
We do, the curriculum that we're going to be using is similar to some other homeschool pods that are going on, so if any of those families want to consolidate, they'll have a, the desire would be to have a building that that could occur and, and keep the kids in an environment that's positive and uplifting, and, and they're getting that social interaction and not the isolation that can occur with homeschooling.
And I want the record to reflect that by voting to go forward with this project, that the county in no way is being in open competition with the school system of Lander County. What we are doing is, is we repurpose a, a public building to a lessee, and this is the presentation by a potential lessee to rent the building. So, the county has nothing to do with being in competition-
So, no conflict.
-with this school system. So, there's no conflict of interest there. We're just entertaining the county, and Amy and I are working with, as the county agents. We are looking at a approach, a presentation by an entity, a legal entity, to lease a building, period.
I could have, I could have a million questions, but I think this is a, a good idea, it's choice, it's diversity. Here's a question. So, the schools have a kid they can't handle, and they expelled. Can you come to you?
Membership is open to anybody, membership is open to anyone, small annual fee, very small, and then a small monthly tuition, so as long as those, that can be met. I mean, ideally, the goal would be that we would be able to maybe, at a future point in time, even provide scholarships.
Because I could foresee a troubled kid in a regular setting come to a private setting and flourish.
And thrive, right.
Yeah, I think it's very clever, because with the homeschooling thing, that was the thing they lost, was that personal instruction. I mean, parents aren't, I mean, that's a tough task for parents to work. So, now you're putting them into an environment where they're ha, they're basically like home study, but it's supervised home study.
This, yeah, this provides the legal vehicle with which to gather those homeschooled children.
And so, who are the ones that are going to be helping? How many, do you have volunteers, or all of that, how is that?
We're going to be volunteer-based initially, so, that we're hoping that's a very short timeframe. We are in the process of reaching out to secure some grants, and obviously, monthly tuition is not going to cover a large amount of the expenses, but we're trying to keep the expenses very small. We're going to gather tables as we, and chairs as we can, and try to limit all expenses in that regard by utilizing, you know, supply donations and things like that, so.
I should point out that, that I've been advised, Amy and I have been advised, that Kimberly has a grant writer on board-
Yes.
-as part of their team when they made this protest.
He actually specializes in private school grant writing, so, yeah.
And the typical, for everybody that you have involved, the typical background checks and all of that, I mean, I know that's a ridiculous question, but I'm still going to ask it.
Yeah.
The whole fingerprinting, everything, doing all the backgrounds on all of these people.
So, the type of structure that it is, is a private educational association. So, it's no different than RNC, DNC, Boy Scouts of America, they're all private man, private associations. So, as the organization deems necessary, then we would certainly look to have those done, but it would be done in, as a, as a private-type background check versus a public venue, yeah.
So, you need to decide if three, if you want to do it for a one-year pilot thing, or, or just go into three years, whatever you want, is, but I'd like to give them at least three years to-
I agree.
I agree, three years. One year is going to be your test year, getting your feet on the ground. I think three years is reasonable with the same language we always use.
Okay.
Would it be possible, within that document, to incorporate a small area of the back of the building where there's a few parking spaces just for some basketball hoops that we could put up?
Absolutely, that was my concern, was gym equipment, but you can get over to the rec center pretty quick.
True, and, and super easy, just to have something on site to go take a mental break outside and, in the back. It's, it's contained and private, and we could manage that space pretty easily, and it's hard surface already, so.
And if their, if their paperwork clearly shows that they are a legal charitable institution, like I said previously, the county by statute has, has the right and authority, I should say, is a better word, has the authority to give them monies or equipment, or use county equipment. And that's the purpose of, of charitable institutions, that the battery vice statute contemplates that county should help them out as much as possible. So, we don't have to, we don't have the same problems we have with, with leasing our premises to non-charitable institutions that are not 501(c)(3) or compatible charitable institutions. And we've run into those problems, and we've had to get around those. Like, we have, matter of fact, two, two on, on today's agenda where we had to get around it. We just can't give them everything we want to give them. But this charitable institution, in the future, if you want to give them money, or equipment, or loan county equipment, you're able to do that at a future date, and I just want to point that out. That's the difference between, and I've said this before, between charitable institutions and other institutions that, that don't qualify as a charitable institution. And the two charitable institutions are for educational purposes and for health purposes. So, this falls squarely within the charitable institution range.
The founding documents are for a private educational association. It is classified as a 508(c)(1a), which is a private domain nonprofit versus a 501(c)(3), which is a public domain nonprofit. So, that's the difference in the structure.
Well, there's no doubt your group has been thinking outside of the box.
We're trying.
And I think that, that we all agree, we would love to see something active at our, our old grammar school. So, I'm going to make a motion that we authorize our district attorney to draw a lease, and we approve the High Desert Education Association to use the old courthouse, known as the Battle Mountain Grammar School.
For three years.
For three years.
All right.
I'll second it.
So, Patty made the motion, Jer, second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thanks, guys.
Okay.
Oh, no, public comment.
Amy, Kim, you got the three.
Thank you.
So, you want to go under public, public comments?
Thank you, Sullivan, for the record. The only thing I was thinking of is that when the con crew is hired, if we could let Lander Kids Club know, so that way those gals aren't frightened, or the kids, you know, outside playing, or whatever, have you? That was the only thing I was thinking of, is that when they do appear, you know, so that way there's not that startilization.
Yeah, just, just for the record, anytime that we bring the, the con crew in around any schools, the Austin school, we have them around there full-time, we have them around, we, we make sure that the kids aren't present at school at that time, just to avoid any conflicts.
Yes, all right. And so, also, in association, public comment on days-
Muted, unmuted.
Days when the food bank is there, that one day a month, when, when the semi-truck is there, and we've, we've already discussed, if, if, if this was moving forward with this building, we would make that field trip day. So, that could still do its good work, and, and then we wouldn't have a congestion of all, everything going on at the same time. So, we've, we've looked at mitigating.
You got an idea how many kids initially you're going to see?
We don't, I mean, right now, we just have, we have about ten kids. We really haven't reached out. We needed to make sure we had a facility, and we need to make sure we've got some basic funding that makes sense, be it the grants, or the tuition, or the private fundraising. So, that's literally the next step, over the next couple of days, because we have a lot of ground to cover in just a few weeks.
I, I would like you to open up that motion again and modify it, and give Amy permission to use the remainder of the fifty thousand dollars, the thirty-six thousand dollars, to be applied toward carpet and other things for this project.
Would we have to do that in, in a separate agenda?
No.
I mean, that's what the fifty was for, was the rehab of the building course.
Yes, and it's been used.
But we can just make a new motion.
You can make a new motion.
Yeah.
Okay, well, we'll just make a new motion.
Okay.
We'll authorize-
The committee.
The committee.
Yeah, we authorize High Desert Education to work with the county in using the funds that we have left over from the courthouse.
Yeah, we, we initially gave them fifty thousand dollars, I believe.
Yes, the, the committee, the historical committee.
The committee, the historical committee, and- The committee, the historical committee, and.
We all deserve a funding.
And what's left of that is for me and Amy.
Right.
That, that's.
We're the committee.
We're the committee.
And working with the historical, yeah.
We are old, so we can, we can be called historical.
Yeah, we're, we're old.
Okay, so, did you, all right, so.
We got everything on?
Yep.
All right, so Patsy made that motion, all second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, very good.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thanks.
Now, are we on number seven? Is that one on the line, number seven?
Yeah, number seven.
Okay. All right, for discussion and possible action to approve/disapprove the Lander County Clerk's election coordinator IT to do additional duties in the Lander County DMV slash reporters' office in Austin, Nevada, and by the amount to be paid at $25,000 for FY 2021, 2022. All right, Sadie, you're on.
Good morning, Sadie Sullivan, Lander County Clerk, and Leslie's gonna bench with the recorder's office, is with me as well. Want to give your spill? Would you like me to go first?
I guess I need to know your questions first, what you, I'm going to, um.
What have we been doing currently, Leslie?
I have, uh, well, currently, he was, um, Richard was, uh, doing it for the entire county for a period of time. And, um, in that period of time, he came very acquainted with all of my DMV individuals and was helping Austin to stay online because Austin has a terrible time losing internet contact, so they lose their pods. And believe it or not, uh, Gail can be very busy on certain days, and it seems like those days are the days the pods go down. So, he was able to, uh, keep our internet going, keeping, keeping our links going. He's, uh, become well acquainted with my Tyler, people that have set up our historical. I have a, I have a lot. Um, I want to keep him on with my office because it doesn't only benefit my office, it benefits the public. He can keep the webs going because the web has died on several occasions, and I get calls from New York City with people that are doing research into our system, wanting to know what's going on. And so, uh, when it goes down, you would be surprised how many people actually do use our website. Um, I want to keep him on. I'm gonna throw in, for me, it's a $25,000 investment to keep an individual who knows what he's doing, he works well with our, uh, staff, with everyone else that has anything to do with my staff. Um, so, that, that is, and I took it from the MAP funds because I can spend that however. Um, and I have the NRS if you need that. But, um, my main objective is he does a good service for my office. We really need him. Um, I don't know what's happening, and I've had days when there's been nobody. Prior to all of this, it was kind of a very difficult thing. You'd make arrangements for someone to come, meet with the DMV people, and then they would come, but they wouldn't come to my office. You couldn't really keep a schedule, you couldn't keep up on what your, you know, what I need to function. And my biggest concern is to keep my office going, functioning, keep Austin functioning, and it seems to be doing extremely well with, uh, his help. And that's why I'm, I'm putting in the money so that, uh, he can continue his service.
Commissioners, if I may legally, uh, she has an absolute right to do this.
Right.
Uh, but you need to understand that this is not a position you're creating. This is just, she's given additional duties, so we would, she would have to come back every year to reinstate this.
Yes, and as long as I'm re-elected, then I will come back every year.
So, just.
Okay, no, yes.
So, you have that understanding.
So, I see in, so I see that, uh, the $25,000 coming from your budget, but also in here, we have a pay change request. So, why is that on this item?
That was just to show the backup, Sadie Sullivan, for the record, to show what his wage was at the sixty-five because he got dropped.
Okay.
Um, and then to increase it back to the ninety thousand. So, we were told that we had to bring it before you in order to be able to bump it back to the ninety thousand. Um, so, there was a pay decrease once, um, he was no longer the Lander County IT. Um, so, that's affected, uh, several things on that. Um, it's nothing that I had submitted, it was just done automatically. Leslie had submitted paperwork for that $25,000 to be transferred. So, that backup is to show his wage at the sixty-five thousand and then what it would be, uh, with the additional $25,000.
So, do you follow that?
So, yeah, I understand, yeah, no, I understand.
It, it's because he had additional duties, what, doing the full-time county IT, and he was getting the original $25,000 from Lura. So, his, his salary was with that $25,000, but on June 30th, it ended and he lost that, so we need to increase that backup.
But we can't go back in time.
Right.
We have previously.
Huh?
We have previously.
No, we have.
Yes, we have.
Not on.
Not for additional duties.
Not additional duties. When we have a position, this is.
Her duties were actually still included in that IT, um, area, so, I mean, he's still continuing with her, so, um.
My, my legal opinion is that we cannot do it because it's not a position, it's additional duties, and the additional duties start today if it's approved.
But if.
Now, Leslie did call Polpak and they felt, um, they said it was, there was nothing wrong with it. And then Pers also has been, um, contacted as well, and they said whatever's submitted by the HR is what they go by, and Pers did not have a problem as well.
You think? Right, uh, HR says that it is possible, but usually in situations like this, and that's why I said legally, that the position, it's not a position created today, it's additional duties.
Right, because we already have, we already have Richard.
Yes.
We're just increasing his duties.
So, you do have the discretion.
To retro, like, because he's continuing to do the job, correct?
Right.
But it would only retro back to the first of July.
First of July.
Yeah, it's not going back.
Yeah, exactly.
Till, you know, it's just going from July first. And I don't know what his schedule is, so it, it's not a big action.
But I wanted the full explanation on the record, if, if you use the discretion to go back in time.
And, and just for clarification, because I know that all the commissioners were tagged in an email that was sent out, um, I want everybody to understand how the, how the county kind of ended up here. It's not us out for Richard. The, Richard, uh, went in for our advertisement for the county IT. And at the last minute, had, had this been done prior to June 30th, we'd have more time. There would have been, there never would have been any issue with an overlap or, or back pay or any, any issues like that. Um, but he was asking for the additional duties when we offered him the position, and that, and we can't offer additional duties because we have somebody that's, that's qualified now until they've taken the position. Does that, does that make sense?
That makes sense.
Um, you have to take the position, we have to have somebody in the position that is qualified and, and a, and with the ability for us to then come before you guys, say we have a gentleman here that's qualified and can take the additional duties and, and add them on to, to keep his pay where it was. Because, um, a lot of people were looking at this as a cut in pay, but it's not a cut in pay. It was us having to yearly get this approved by the commission, um, for these additional duties, uh, just as Leslie will have to do in the future. So, if Richard or Sadie or anybody was, was confused by that, I apologize, but that's, that's the process we have to do, and it was the date when it fell is why we're having to look back at back paying, not anything malicious or misunderstanding, so, just want to be clear with that.
If you approve this, your motion should include the fact that you are retroactively paying for additional duties back to July 1st. So, it's just one pay period, or two pay periods?
No.
On the retro.
Just one.
Just one. But, but the motion should include the fact that, that you're using your discretion to, to, uh, go back to.
And I would just ask if you continue to do this next year, Leslie? If you guys could do it like in the first two weeks of June so that we don't have to do the back pay?
And I think too also with that.
I think this was a confusing year.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Sadie. It was a confusing year because it didn't happen the way you'd think it was gonna happen. And because of that, um, that's why I did what I did to maintain, basically. Um, things can change within the year, things can change. You, you know, I mean, you may not need my, that amount of money. He could assume the position and get the pay, and we can go on with life. But until further notice or until we know what is going on, because he's a good service to the whole county, actually, he knows what he's doing. Problem is, there's only one of him, so it's hard to get it all done for everybody at one time. Um, I just wanted to maintain him because he is important to our office to maintain. So, uh, that was my purpose, nothing, nothing.
No, no, and I, and I would just like the record requirement for Richard, that I think he's doing a great job. I think he provides a great service, but there's one Richard, and there's a pile of offices here that, and everybody wants it done now. Um, it's just, it's just not a one-man job, is, is the truth. So, just, just so Richard knows, you know, and it's on the record that it's not a matter of service, he does a great job, we'd love to have him.
Yeah.
We're just, we're two or three of them.
There's not enough of them.
No.
Yeah, correct, yeah.
They're now growing IT guys on trees around here. With that, I, I make a motion to approve the Lander County Clerk of Election Coordinator IT to do additional duties in the Lander County DMV Recorder's Office in Austin, Nevada, in Battle Mountain, to be paid at, an additional $25,000?
Yes.
An additional $25,000, uh, to be paid retroactively for FY 2021, 2022. Sorry.
Are we good?
Yes.
All right, so Art made the motion, Jer, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, very good.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, guys. Right. Do you want a break?
Uh, if you guys, I just need to stand, I can't sit.
Okay. If you need a break, just.
Blood clot.
Oh, yeah, just let me know if you need to move around more. So, for discussion and possible action to approve/disapprove the following bid for the Lander County, um, Safe Routes to School Phase One, TWP dot, um, NO dot dash LA dash 2021 dash 332. Number one, Honeywell Construction base bid, $2,290,319 and three cents. Number two, alternate bid of Honeywell Construction for $162,127.50. Total bid including $2,452,446.53, recommended by, uh, the Public Works Director a year on.
This is phase two.
Okay.
I, I believe you said phase one.
Did I say, oh, I'm sorry, phase one, I'll correct if I said that, sorry.
It's phase two.
Phase two. Go ahead.
Good morning, Commissioners, Erin Martinez with AM Engineering for the record. Um, you've got a recommendation for a award that my office issued, uh, the Public Works Department. In that recommendation of award, just like you had identified, uh, the, uh, base bid amount, two million, two-point-two million plus or minus, with a bid alternate A of $162,127.50. Um, my office went through and did a bid evaluation of the contractor's information and bid follow-up. We verified his contractor's license and, and bonding ability. They're in compliance with AV144, which is a public works contractor preference component. Uh, we went through the bid tabulation form to make sure there's no price loading or anything like that. Uh, everything came back, um, five stars on that. Uh, the subcontractor qualifications all met our criteria, uh, the material supplier qualifications met our criteria. And although we received one competitive bid for the project, the two bidders on the plan holders list, um, ended up being the subcontractor to the prime. Um, and so essentially, the two folks that were interested in bidding the project ended up teaming together essentially. Uh, that team is currently active on phase one of the project, so I was happy to see that we're gonna have some continued continuity on the project. And so far, everything's been going really well, so I don't expect phase two to be any different. And so with that, we recommend the approval of the base bid and the bid alternate A.
Erin, so it's my understanding when I read through it that actually, this is a little bit higher than what we had originally thought it was going to be, but that we have it in the budget, because.
We do have it in the budget, it is slightly higher, we, we can cover it with the force account. Uh, but in the total budget, we have it, it does come over budget for what we had originally budgeted the project.
Right, oh, we're okay.
And, yeah.
And it was the well, the well building, they wanted, we're building a new, building rather.
I think, I'm not sure about the budgetary component, actually.
I apologize. This project, I'm speaking of the next project, who is up next, Marty Ugalde. Um, so this project, we have $3 million in the budget for this. We are, we are under budget on this project.
This one's okay.
Yes, it is the next one, I believe that, that me and you are speaking of this.
The pond lining.
Correct.
Okay, okay, so we're all right on this one.
Yeah, so I, I apologize for the confusion.
Well, I did too, because I turned and I thought, I've got everything all under one. Okay, all right, we're fine then, good.
Yes, you had me worried, Commissioner Waits, I thought I was looking at the wrong budgetary numbers, but no, we're absolutely under budget on this by about 600-plus thousand.
Okay, but you want the alternate bid too?
Yes, the bid alternate A is the striping component of the project, which would be all the crosswalk striping aspects.
All right.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the following bid for Lander County Safe Routes to School Phase Two. Uh, the base bid of $2,290,319.3 cents. And to include the alternate bid, um, not to exceed $162,127.50. Total bid, not to exceed $2,452,446.53.
All right, I have a second.
I'll second.
Patsy made the motion by a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. All right, number nine. So, for discussion and possible action to approve/disapprove the following bid for the Battle Mountain Golf Course Pond, Lining, Fountains, and Cart Bridge Project, PWP, um, number, dip a dot LA 2021 dash, um, two-nine-six. Number one, Honeywell Construction base bid, $288,834, recommended by Public Works Director and Day Engineering.
Mr. Marty back there, he prefers not to come up here if we can get a quick approval. Um, however, these are, this is where the question lies, is the, the, we're slightly over on this, however, it is covered by the force account if we choose to use it. Um, we're hoping that this project goes smooth, and there's some cost savings where we don't. Um, we do have it in the total budget to cover the project, though.
So, now a question, since I've been to that golf course once out there. The pond once, so is this a different pond and things, is, are, you're redoing the one that's already out there? Or are you building another one?
No, so, um, to my fault, the pond, uh, whole mine, we've dug out and we were gonna line ourselves and put the, put the lining in there, and then there was also the talk of a donation of the lining from the, from the contractors who did the, um, sewer pond line. Long story short, it's all them have fell through. It's been looking that way for three years, and so this is why we budgeted for this project to, to get it done and done right for the, for the golfers.
Bert, are we, uh, have we met at a point where we projected costs and now because of inflation it's gonna be more, is that what, is that a factor here?
No, their bid is their bid, their, their, uh, we, we have their bid, so we, we aren't having inflation on this. Um, is, the, the concern.
Building, building materials are going through the sky, that was my.
They, they are, and that, and that's a concern with, uh, with moving, you know, as far as some of these places where we've had cost savings in the past, um, we may be suffering in the future, you know.
Okay, so let me ask about the well building then, because, um, originally, hi Marty. Originally, we asked to just repair it, and then in this bid, they're doing a brand-new one, and is that something that's necessary, or can we repair the old one, or?
We have discretion, there's no doubt about that. Um, and I wish I was more involved in these projects now, but I'm not as involved as I used to be. Um, and Donnie would typically be here to answer them questions.
I, I guess that's my own, well, maybe Marty knows.
I will do my best, thank you, Marty Ugalde.
You would turn, we, you could.
Push your button there.
There you go, there you go, thank you.
Marty Ugalde with Engineering, I'll do my best to answer that. Uh, on the, the escalation of, of pricing really quick, the only real, um, two issues on this would be the lining, which is, uh, an HDPE plastic material, and plastics have definitely gone up, and the bridge, which is a timber structure. And wood, you know, just went absolutely, uh, through the roof in a matter of weeks and months. And, but wood isn't, the price of wood is now coming down. Um, one of the aspects of the prior, prior bid I was involved with at Yellow Brick Road with PVC pipe, uh, the contractor had made an indication that that price was good for four days. Um, in this case, they didn't make any indication that the price would have, would be, uh, subject to, to change anytime soon, so I think prices are, is, is a good price as far as, uh, the, the, the pricing climate for materials. But as far as the building, to answer your question about the building, um, if, if you've looked at that well building, the, the goal was to retrofit, but I think once they take the siding off to replace it, it might come down on its own. I'm not certain of that, but it's, uh, not in the best condition. And the roof has to be removable to access the well pump. In this project, they're replacing the well pump, so, um, we can. So, um, we can look at it and maybe they did some value engineering before they were, they turned in their bid, but, uh, they were the only contractor. Uh, Remington was the other contractor, but they didn't submit a bid, and, uh, I'm not sure why, but, um, Honeywell's done a, a lot of work here, as you know, uh, for, for a number of years and, and they're a reputable contractor, and they give us good bids, I think, so. I, I think it's a good bid, I don't think the prices are subject to change over time, so. Uh, but as far as the new well building, um, that, that might be.
Well, we'll leave that up to the.
I think that would be a benefit.
We'll leave it up to the construction and the experts, but, um, they know that we originally wanted to repair it if we could. And sometimes it is cheaper to build new, I mean, you never know, so we'll leave that up to the experts, as long as they know we had a consideration on it.
Yes, and, and we, we could certainly ask that question and, um, and find out where they ca- came up with that idea, but.
Thank you.
It might have been more to, to rehab than to replace.
Might have been.
Uh, labor wise, labor wise.
That happens.
Yeah, labor wise, it might have been.
I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, the following bid for the Battle Mountain Golf Course Pond, Lining, Fountains, and Cart Bridge Project, P W P, uh, number L A two zero two one dash two nine six, uh, awarding it to Honeywell Construction base bid of two hundred eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty-four dollars, which is recommended by our Public Works Director and Day Engineering.
Alright.
Well, I can second that.
Alright, so, um, Brian made the motion, Art second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks Marty.
Alright, we're gonna go ahead and take a ten minute break, please. Alright, so we're gonna open the meeting back up, but then now we're going to go into a closed litigation meeting.
Muted.
No, I can do it.
Alright, very good. Moving forward, for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove the, the Stryker Service Agreement for the maintenance of the ambulance gurneys?
Okay, so, um, I thought this was something that need, you know, we're in the process of rewriting this contract with the hospital, and this is one of the things. So Stryker, um, we had a contract with them in the past for seventeen thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars for them to maintain the gurneys that go in the ambulances. And, uh, um, and then, when I got this back with the new one, and is what had happened, some of the gurneys that we just bought brand new had a year or a two-year service agreement that came with them when bought brand new. So, them would have been falling off, and now they gotta be put on the service agreement. And the new service agreement, as you guys can see in your backup, goes all the way up to thirty-five? I wanted to say forty-two thousand, yeah, forty-two thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars for, for service. So when I, I reached out to Sean Burke, you know, that runs that, um, ambulance over there, and said, Sean, this is, for one, not something that, that I think that the county should have to bear the full burden, I know that we're, this is part of why we're renegotiating, but, um, but also that, do we really use that much? Is there that big of a problem? He said, well, we had one battery that started on fire, they had to come out and work on it once, um, and that, that's the only problem that we've really had. It might not be a bad idea if the county considered self-insuring, um, as opposed to paying this, and if you pay this and they have no problems, well, then it's a pretty good deal for me.
What are the two though, you think, the one was thirty-five and the one was forty-two, and I didn't understand the difference?
There is different, um, different gurneys on it. So that, the last one was the additional gurney, by the time I got it to the meeting, that would be falling off and be added to the service agreement.
They both say, it says quantity, five, and then six, they both say the same.
Yes, so this is from Sean, is one has the lines through it, you'll see, um, Remnant, the, on, it's got lines through two of them, number two and number four. So I believe that them are added down below, and that's where you come up with the difference between the thirty-five and the forty-two. So the forty-two would be the, to cover all of our current gurneys that the county has. It just seems like a tremendous amount of money for.
What is the new one, I wanna say eighteen thousand, but I can't remember, but it's a new striker?
Oh, I, I.
I think it's like in the twenties.
I couldn't tell you.
I think it's almost cheaper to replace one, rather than get this insurance.
Really, but the whole idea of insurance is protecting us against something that we can't afford to pay.
Right.
I mean, that's why you have insurance, or it's the law. Right, but if we can afford the loss or the repair, and, and I think we can, we're in pretty good shape, then why do we have to have?
I think we're wasting forty-five.
Yeah, exactly. That's, that's, that was my feelings exactly, but I didn't wanna make that decision without this commission's approval.
That's the idea, you look at the risk.
Yep. I think it's cheaper to self-insure, especially considering the past history of Stryker and the issues that we have had, um. Calling them out would have been far cheaper to just pay the bill and have them come out and fix it than to pay for this insurance. Well, especially at this rate, at forty-two thousand, seventeen thousand for, for all of them was, was different.
They wanted charges for a year.
Yeah, this is.
That's crazy, so.
So, and, and, so if the, if the commission chooses, we can just self-insure and we will not renew the, the Stryker Service Agreement, um, that would be my recommendation.
That's mine, I would as well.
We don't even need to make a motion, we're just still taking action on it.
Yeah, or, or, we don't need to disapprove.
Or you can, if you wanna make a statement.
Well, I would say it was to make a motion, yeah, to, that we don't renew, just, just like you said, to make a statement that we're not gonna pay that, and we'll self-insure.
Well, I'll make a motion that we disapprove the Stryker Service Agreement for Maintenance of Ambulance Gurneys and for Lander County to self-insure.
I'll second.
So Brian made the motion, um, Jared second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Sixteen.
Um, so now are we on thirteen?
Fourteen, or no, thirteen, yeah, thirteen.
So, uh, for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove the lease of water rights agreement between Lander County and Mueller Land and Cattle Company LLC. So I'm assuming this must be the Licking's Ranch that used to be the Tomar's Ranch? Okay, so this is an annual one that we rewrite?
Um, annual? No, it's, it's every three years.
Is it every three years?
Yeah, it's every three years.
It's a three-year contract.
But I, but I went through it and it doesn't look like there's any changes at all, except the date.
Right, this, this is basically, uh, we just wanna, we wanna, uh, the water to be used so we don't lose it.
Right.
Basically, that's it.
Right, but we haven't changed anything but the date, is what I'm saying, right? Okay.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve the lease of water rights agreement between Lander County and the Mueller Land and Cattle Company LLC.
Alright, I'll second it.
And authorize, yeah.
And authorize, the chair to sign.
Alright, I'll second it. Brian made the motion, Kathy second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove the lease agreement between Lander County and Battle Mountain Raceway Association? Is there anybody from, like, the Raceway Association here?
I believe there was somebody online, um, that was going to speak to this.
Is there anyone there for Battle Mountain Raceway Association?
And who are you?
Heather Bondurer, Secretary.
Who is it, can we get your name, please?
Heather Bondurer, Secretary of Battle Mountain Raceway Association.
Hold on a second, please.
Muted. Unmuted.
Okay. Alright, so, one more time? Who are we speaking to one more time, please?
Hi, I took my headphones out, what was that?
Uh, one more time, your name, we couldn't hear you.
My name is Heather Bondurer, with the Battle Mountain Raceway Association.
Thank you.
Hey Commissioners, what this is, is a lease agreement for, uh, for our property, and it is a, you'll notice in the agreement itself, it states, and I quote, uh, whereas lessor is authorized to lease property to a civic organization if the property is actually used for civic purposes pursuant to N R S two four four point two eight four, and whereas lesser's property is not needed for a public purpose of the county and is used for public benefit and civic purposes. And that's the language that the N R S two four four board two eight four provides, that we have to find that it's used for civic purpose in order to allow them this lease, and I believe the dollar.
And you did, right? You did, I mean, they meant.
Well, you guys have to find that it's being used for civic purpose, so it's kinda like you're, by agreeing to this, you're making a finding that, yeah. And if you need a presentation by them, and if you wanna ask them questions, you can, but basically, you're making a finding. And that's why I quoted that language, that, uh, two things, that it's used, you're leasing it to a civic organization to be used for a civic purpose, and that it's not needed for public purposes. If you make that finding, then you legally can enter into this lease agreement.
Can, um, give me an example of the difference between a civic purpose versus a public purpose?
Public purpose would be, uh, if we wanted to put a branch of the government out there, of our government.
Got you, got, oh, got you, okay, I see that, yeah.
So, we wanna, you know, if, if, uh, you wanna make a building out there and, and, you know, for whatever, it's a governmental purpose for the government to use for that purpose.
Oh, this is a civic purpose, right, yeah.
Is for the civic, for the people of Lander County to use.
Yeah.
For their purposes that benefit the citizens of Lander County.
Yeah, yeah, that's definitely what it is, so.
Now, we also had a copy of the old one, which of course is expired, but basically, it's the same. But I did have one concern about it, and that was under the, um, uh, it's under the liquor and fraud violations. Because when they came before us to get their liquor license, and we thought they, that they didn't have to keep it all year because it would cost them extra money per quarter, and they weren't using the raceway, so did not we approve it for their season?
Yes, you, you did it, season.
Okay, so on this, it says that they have to maintain their liquor license at all times during the term of the lease. So we'll have to adjust that, it has to be modified.
Uh, they, even if it's seasonal, if it's seasonal year by year, th- they are maintaining it.
They're not letting it drop, and trying to reapply for it, even though they're not using.
So they, even if it's seasonal, we put a condition on it that it's seasonal. So if they wanna go outside that condition, then they breached the, the, uh, the license. But they're, they're keeping it up to date, even though it's seasonal, as long as they pay for the season.
Legally, you're saying it meets this definition of the lease. Okay, that was my only concern.
It, it does.
Alright, so that's clear, okay, thank you.
Did you have any questions, Rob?
Now, if they wanted to open this up on a year-round event.
Right.
Then they have.
We'd have to change the conditions, yeah, got it. No, I was just concerned about the way it was written, so if, that's what we have legal counsel for.
County, uh, pipe, uh, pipe from the county wells, the one out there now, right by them?
Yeah.
Cause I see they got a thing in here leasing water, or getting water from.
They, they're able to tap into the county water.
They're tapped into the county water.
They fill their water truck.
But, uh, I think that they may be referring to the well that they fill the water truck out of.
That's what they do.
And, and we still do have, yeah.
They're leasing that from somebody that, or is that the county owns that?
No, the county owns that as well.
They're filling their water truck, and then the racetrack, they're watering it down.
Right.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the lease between Lander County and the Battle Mountain Raceway Association. Uh, per our lease agreement, it is for one year, and authorize our chair to sign.
Alright, second.
I'll second it.
So Patsy made the motion, Jared second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Very good, thank you. Alright. So, for discussion of possible action to approve and disapprove the site license agreement between Lander County and Eagle Communications, number sixteen. So I had a question that doesn't have to do with the lease part, and I'd asked Ted about this, and I was, why are you still a little bit confused? Last time I was in Austin, a gentleman had asked about getting, being able to get the service there, um, with an antenna. And so, when I called Bart to try to get an explanation of how they're able to get, get the service there, because they bounce around on who, how they get it, um, you know, Bart said I had to talk to the people from Eagle Communications. And I didn't talk to anybody yet until we did this, but I still don't understand how that whole process works. Um, for Austin to be able to get, um, for number sixteen, for the Eagle Communication.
We're on fifteen now, I thought we were on fifteen.
We already did fifteen.
We did?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, like, the first one, first or second one.
That's right, that's right. Then I, then I'm behind, uh.
Don't confuse me.
Okay, this is just a site license agreement, and it has nothing to do with, uh, when they came in here and ma- made a proposal, they got into three or four different aspects of this, they were all over the place.
Well, that's where it got confusing.
And that's why I tried to say, listen, what you want is just a site license agreement. You want permission to put equipment on our water tower, correct? Yes, and then we're gonna do, I said, I don't care what else you're gonna do. We're gonna give you permission, Eagle, what do they call it, Eagle, uh?
Communications.
A site license agreement to put their equipment on our water tower. Then if they want to make a deal with, with our, with our TV board, and with Eureka County's TV board, that's fine.
Okay.
And if they want to come in and say, we've got an idea for you for Kingston and Austin, using Eureka's TV board, we could get into that at the end of the day.
Oh, okay, I see.
We could certainly do that, but this could be simplified, and it's just a site license agreement on the same terms as the other two vendors who have site license agreements on the same, on the same water tower. If that makes sense.
Yes, yes.
I tried to simplify it.
Yeah, okay.
So let me ask a question, 'cause it is a three-year contract, but it says we reserve the right to look at that every year to determine whether we wanna charge them more or less, or whatever we're doing. So, how do we cue that, who, who's, who does that, is that your office?
That's my office and, and Vertolo's office in conjunction, but, but, we wanna keep the site license, that's why we, we reduced it to a site license agreement. Uh, we wanna keep it consistent with all vendors, so this is the third vendor that's on there, and we're charging them all three the same rate. And how many cut, at first, when we first did this years ago, Patsy, if you recall, we were gonna reevaluate it every year to see if they have an increase in people, so we could increase our charges. That goes to the courthouse, that's the courthouse site license agreement, that's not the water tower site license agreement. So, we're hoping to have continuity and a consistent, uh, amount of money to each vendor.
Well, that's, it was fair, yes.
Yes, for that, for that.
Okay.
Well, I'll make a motion, if there's no more questions, that we approve the site license agreement between Lander County and Eagle Canu- uh, Eagle Communications. And it's, it's for the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars monthly, correct?
Right.
We don't know if they're going to sign this agreement, but this is the agreement that we're gonna sign.
Okay.
If they wanna, if they don't wanna do it, that's fine, it's up to them.
We need to authorize.
And authorize, the chair to sign.
I'll second the motion.
Alright, Brian made the motion, Patty second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, nice. And for the update regarding the Austin Town Boundary Realignment Project?
I'm not sure if we have anybody on the, on the phone or not, I know that, uh, Ms. Caitlin has reached out to him a couple times through email, and we haven't heard back, so. Um, the last time that we did hear, um, this. The last time that we did hear, Mr. Grube was sick, so hopefully, hopefully he's doing well if he's not on the phone.
I'm here. I'm here.
Okay.
Hello.
Good afternoon, commissioners. For the record, my name is Larry Grube. I'm professional land surveyor and chief photogrammetrist for Summit Engineering.
Can you hold on for just one moment for us, please?
Certainly.
Muted. Unmuted.
All right, go ahead.
Once again, this is Larry Grube. I am the chief photogrammetrist and the professional land surveyor for Summit Engineering. I'm a little bit ill-prepared today. I haven't gotten confirmation of meeting till this morning. We are, we, we have gotten a little, well, we've gotten behind, um, we lost some staff, and the engineering intern that's been helping me has been working on another project for the last six weeks. So he's finishing up this week. We're hoping to get all our packages for subdivision maps A through L out to the residents here in, sometime in the next month. Um, it would probably be a good idea either in August or September to meet down in Austin to basically find out if we have any issues from the public regarding, um, the configurations for the property lines we've come up with. One thing that has come out of this is thanks to our, um, thanks to the research we've done on, um, the public lands, um, and our interaction with Nancy Wittruba, who's the subcontractor for the assessor's office. Um, there's been a lot of significant updates to the assessor, um, to the, to the assessor database. Also, about four weeks ago, Tom Dowager met with, uh, Robert Hughes, um, who is Austin Resources. Uh, basically, he's one of, he's pretty much the largest landholder in the Austin, in, within the Austin disincorporated town limits. He has a situation where he has a lot of smaller parcels that people are encroaching on. So he basically, um, got consent from Bob Hughes to yield those encroachments to the people that are occupying them. Um, and he was satisfied with, um, in the areas where he has large contiguous, um, ownership, he was satisfied to get the, um, unused rightaways within those areas. So yes, progress is slow. Um, we have a severe lack of manpower here. Um, you can see from our invoicing, we are not, we're not, uh, camping out on the job, so to speak. We're just not, we just don't have a lot of manpower to keep moving this forward right at the moment. But we're hoping that'll change here in the next three to four weeks.
All right, so I have a question. Um, when we were in Austin, though, we have Lady do public comment about an issue with the boundary, um, property lines and things like that. Now, is that something that is going to be dealt with for these guys, or how is that issue going to be?
You know, with, without looking at the exact, you know, parcel they're looking at, she said other people were encroaching, and they weren't sure. That's not anything that we're doing. We're doing roads and that. It looks like they might need a private surveyor if it's their parcel together. So it could be private, but, but without looking at it, we didn't know. And if she called Summit, and hopefully Larry, Larry took a look at it for her, which is what we need to do, then he would tell her.
Right. If she would contact me, um, I'd be happy to look at, look at what her situation is. Um, we are pretty much, I mean, pursuant to the eighties decree, we are supposed to be fixing the property lines between owners as well as fixing the rightaway lines. Um, one, one issue, though, that is going to span out over a few years, um, as a result of interaction with the assessor's office and finding out that, um, there are unpatented mining claims. Um, there are a couple of sliver parcels that go through, um, go through private ownership and frankly create a mess. And we have request, we made a request, um, to have those transferred to the district attorney. Um, but the BLM's real estate office said, well, that's gonna take a few years. So, um, we're, we have a master plan for those areas. But until the BLM gives up the, um, these slivers, um, they cause a problem. There's a big sliver going right through the, the highways, um, the, uh, southern, uh, land maintenance yard that literally splits the property in half. And there's nothing, there's nothing we can do about it until they get, until the BLM, uh, patents that land to, to Landor County.
Okay, Larry, this is Pat, so tell me, um, have we done anything as far as milers or any areas at all with new maps that have been actually finished? I mean, we had a couple for a while, but I, I don't know where we are. Somebody mentioned that you.
We, 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 after doing heavy research, and I'm, we, probably repeating stuff I've told you before. After doing a lot of research, we established that we did not have to do, we did not have to restrict ourselves to just four parcels per map with merger and re-subdivision parcel maps. And we were able to go to merger and re-subdivision subdivision maps. Map A is submitted to, um, is submitted to Bob Morley for tech check because we have agreement on that one. Map B would be the next one, but that had, that was where we discovered the problems due to the unpatented mining claims that Landor County was formally saying was their property, when in reality, it's public land that we conquered. Uh, we finally got a response from, from the BLM saying, hey, that's, that's not Landor County's, that belongs to us. And that's when we went to, there, there's some of those unpatented claims that are just slivers. Um, I forget what year it was, but, um, back around the eighties, there was some of the, about three of the patents were, um, patented out, or three of the public land parcels were patented to the, to the, to the district attorney, and they were absorbed, they were absorbed into the town, and that's what we're trying to do with these others. Um, I think that if, if you look at the, what's called the master title plant that the BLM maintains, um, that has not always been up to date. We finally got one, it was, and we were able to, uh, determine which of the lots, their government lots, uh, that needed to be given, patented to the counties so that we could redistribute the land.
Larry, okay, I'm gonna back up, because you're really difficult to hear on the phone. We can follow some of it, but then we kind of lose you on it. I know there's excuses on every single one, but the question I have is, are there any parcel maps that are done, ready to be signed and recorded?
Um, map A would be the, would be the closest one.
I'm sorry, the what?
Map A.
Map A, subdivision map A.
Map A. Okay, how many, how many maps are there altogether?
We have A through L, which is 12.
I'm sorry, how many?
12.
12?
Subdivision 12, which divides, which fixes about 60% of the town.
Okay, um, so how many maps do we actually have approved that have been recorded right now?
We have none at this time.
Okay.
We had to change, we had to change from the parcel map approach because we didn't have an issue with that. Um, Bob, we, they were originally map one, map two, map three, and Bob Morley had an issue with us recording them out of order. After we discovered we could go to the subdivision map process, um, he was, he was okay with, uh, in other words, even though they're still alphabetical, it doesn't really matter what order they, they recorded.
Okay, so where we are right now, do you need to come down and do any more surveying in Austin at all? Are you totally done with the surveying?
Okay, I have, um, I may have to come out and look for some more mineral corners, which we found some about six weeks ago. I haven't had the time to analyze if we have enough data. Um, the only real surveying we would have to do beyond that is setting of the corners once the maps record. Um, and that could be actually.
Do you understand him?
Um, another surveyor could actually be hired to do that, um, by sparring a certificate of amendment. If it would be more cost-effective to have somebody send them closer to Austin.
Okay, Larry, I'm still not following you. Um, just answer yes or no. Do you have more surveying to do in Austin? Yes?
Yes.
Yes, and I thought you would be done with everything by this time. We were supposed to have everything completed two months ago. I hope you hear our frustration. I am assuming everything, all right, I'm assuming everything you are doing right now is just all paperwork? Because we're still getting bills twice a month, we're paying you. So you're still, what, doing work in the office?
That is correct, and if you look at those invoices, you'll see that they're mostly from Acoston.
Okay, you've got to get out and finish the surveying. I know there's always gonna be exceptions and problems with different areas. But we want some maps done, and we want to see what you are doing. So the bottom line is, we want maps. When can we expect those, some completed maps?
Would you like me to come out at the end of August or September and give you a presentation on those?
Okay, uh, this is Kathy Anshel. The last meeting we had, we were having this exact, it's like, this is like having the same conversation over and over and over again. And before I became commissioner, they were having the same conversation. And that's, I've been here almost three years, and before, and when I sat in the audience was listening. And so I think that done with the presentation, we want the job completed and completed correctly, period.
And I, I acknowledge that. It's, we, we are just, it's just lack of manpower here. We've been trying to hire.
And I'm sorry, I'm gonna interrupt you for that, but prior to COVID, it was a lack of manpower. That is not our problem, and I'm sorry about that, and I, but we want it done. And so how you get that done and done correctly, I'd like to see it done by August, because that's what we said six months ago when we had the last updates. And I'm sorry, and I know you're frustrated, but that's not our issue. We're paid for a job to get done, and we want it done. So by August, we would like it finished.
It won't be finished by August.
Thank you.
No, it won't be finished.
It won't be finished by August?
Won't. Okay, we don't need the presentation. What we want to see is completed, recorded parcel maps. The ones you are doing, the milers, and all these sections. So get to work on it, get some completed for us, so the next update we have, we know we're making progress.
This is my suggestion, is that we, I don't know if we're too far into this or not, but with them that, why can't we, for however long they've gone past, that we, they start having to pay us for not having the job completed, just like they do with regular contracts? Because this is ridiculous.
Can we do that?
We've, we've said very clearly.
Hold on, please.
Three.
No, not, we can enter into a contract with them, a continuing contract, with certain conditions in it like that, but we can't enter into a, put those conditions on a pre-existing agreement.
So it would be cheaper for us, and I'm not, and I don't, I truly don't know the answer to this. Was it cheaper for us to hire another engineering firm to do this, to get it done? For, for the amount to keep going, that we're not getting anything?
Well, we need, we need to find out a, a date, a certain date by them, and give them until that date to complete their agreement. And if they don't, then we get another firm.
Okay, so talk to your powers that be and give us a date, a final drop-dead date that we will be done.
And we can, we can put it on the agenda to, uh, to stop paying until it's completed, too.
All right, and we can also.
But we can't do that here today.
Okay, now we'll put on a future agenda item.
But it's not an action item, it's.
We'll ask for the, on, for the, uh, future agenda items, we'll go ahead and do that. So we'll be putting on a future agenda item to stop payment until the job is complete.
Okay, um, is Counselor Harara there?
Yes.
Um, I was, uh, before, um, Kyla left, um, they were going, they were going to try to, uh, get the, uh, Craig Mastrati to get his mother's, um, uh, probate open, uh, because we've got Mastrati Park, we've still got that, we've got Mastrati parcels all over the town. And, and there's nobody to legally sign for him until probate gets open.
We are opening, we are finishing all the probates now, so I will have to check with, uh, with, uh, it's not one of ours. I don't think it's one of ours. I don't think we're the public administrator of that. They have their own attorney.
I, when I talked to you and Kyla, um, you guys were going to go meet with Craig Mastrati regarding his getting his mother's, um, probate started so that we could have signers for those parcels. Those parcels, um, create problems.
I, you might have that conversation with Kyla, and that may have been our attention, uh, intention. But as far as I know, they have their private attorney, which means we can, me as the public administrator can't interfere with that. Uh, so I don't know what Kyla's plan was, she's not with us. I can certainly research, I can research that, but I, I know we can't open, we can't open something like that.
My last understanding is that they have not even opened up probate.
They don't have their.
I under, I under.
But see, that's.
I understand you can't.
But that shouldn't affect all the other parcel apps, not all the other sections. And we understand the delay on that. But we're saying, let's finish up the rest.
If, if they, if they come to the, me as the public administrator to do it, uh, I'd be, I'd be able to do it, but they don't, they don't statutorily, uh, fall within the guidelines of me doing that work. That's why they have a private attorney.
Yeah, Counsel, Counselor Ted, I, I, I understand what you're saying, and I understand our discussion, um, in the beginning of the year. But we need, in, in other words, you've got these parcels that have encroachments. We need to reconfigure the parcels, but we have nobody that can legally sign. And Kyla, and Kyla said, you and Kyla would talk to Craig Mastrati to try to get, to get him to get with his attorney and get his probate, get his mother's probate. to try to get, to get him to get with his attorney and get his probate, get his mother's probate moved forward.
Well, Kyla misspoke because I can't do it since they're represented by an attorney. But Kyla could do it, or you can do it and contact the attorney. But I can't do it because another attorney is involved. I can't go to the attorney's client and have a discussion with them, knowing that an attorney is representing them. That is an ethical violation.
And that, this is Kathy Anshel. Whoa, whoa, before you start, going back onto that, same latching onto that. I would believe that it would be your job to, in writing, be contacting their attorney and then, and CCing our district attorney, that you have contacted that attorney in many attempts to get this probate open, to handle this, because you are trying to get these maps done. And to the best of my knowledge. Pardon me?
And our attorney, our attorney Steve Miles told me I could, I could not do that.
Well, then your attorney should be explaining to us why we're paying you, and all we're doing is spinning in a circle, and that nobody's getting contact. Our district attorney can't do that. And if there was still a problem, then the least that your company should have been doing was writing to our district attorney in, something in writing saying, I have this conflict. What do we do next? Not to Kyla, but to our district attorney saying, where, how do we fix this problem?
Okay, what we need to do is, is Larry, you try to contact Craig. And if he, okay, then we'll have Bart then try to contact him, Bert. And if he still doesn't do something, then I'll come up with something out of the box. But I don't know if it. See, I can't do it legally. I can't do it legally, Larry, because they have, because Craig exists. Basically. Craig exists, and a public administrator is only there if there's, if there's no people in the family to do it.
I even contacted other members of his family to please, you know, please talk to Craig about getting this done.
Is Craig, is Craig the, he's actually here at the estate?
But our, our attorney basically told me that we can, we have to be very careful to not appear to be using any kind of coercion. And I have a very, I have a very good, I have a very friendly relationship with Craig Mistrati. And when I, anytime I come through town, if his vehicle is, truck is at his shop, I stop in, I'm like, Craig, you're killing me here. Please get, get this fixed.
And he, does he keep on saying he'll do it, or what?
He said, he basically says his attorney is not getting it done.
Who's his attorney?
I have no idea.
I did, yeah, that's, that's our problem. I don't know either.
Would you, if you want me to, I will call Craig and find out who his attorney is.
Yeah, you can do that because.
And I will email you and Bert and Anna as to what the outcome of that conversation is.
Perfect. Sounds good.
Okay.
All right, Ian Boer. Questions?
I do have one comment.
All right.
So, if you guys would like, and this to be a future agenda item, it might be relevant that we relook at the contract because the way it is written right now, it's very similar to the levy contract and how it was written. And there are some open ends to this engineering agreement that we have with them. And we need to relook at that if we're going to approach this in any sort of aggressive approach or any progressive approach to get this accomplished.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Please. So, for the future agenda items.
And I do, I do have one thing I forgot to give you guys, and I didn't give an update today. And I was thinking, there was something I was supposed to be updating you guys on. You guys had asked for an update on the bug contract from previous years. So, 18, 19, we had budgeted $175,000 and spent $308,290. I believe, we must have had a pretty wet year that year, so it must have been a tough year.
That was, no, that was the West Nile virus that we discovered in the south.
Okay.
And so, all this extra was in Austin. Remember, they, they found dead birds, and they all had, and then we tested in that whole area and had West Nile.
Okay.
So, that, that was the exception on 18 and 19.
Okay, good deal. I'm, thank you for the clarification, Pat. See, I appreciate that. And then in 2020, we budgeted $175,000, spent $130,000. And then 2021, this year, we have the $275,000, we've spent $36,000. Now, we've taken some money out of there for crickets as well. So, we're, we are using some of this money to poison crickets. The state was supposed to take over, and then COVID hit, so they haven't really done much. So, we're trying to do as much as we can for knocking the crickets back where we can. But pretty good savings. And you know, it's a dry year, so we have, we have that going for us. But on the flip side of that, I think that it might be another one of them deals that it may be cheaper to not fully engage in a contract and do as needed basis. They come out and they do their assessments, and they, and they look things over, and they let you know how many more times they need to come out as opposed to a carte blanche. So, that's the update for the, for the bug side of it.
Anybody else have any future agenda items? So, do we have any more public comment?
Robert, quick for the sheriff's office. I just wanted to give you a quick update on the, what you approved before to get an IP block for the county. Laura DeValle, the assessor, was running into some major issues with contacts that she had, and I engaged with her to kind of take over that, to assist her with that. And so, we've made some progress on that, going towards getting the county's own IP block for our internet services and stuff. And it's a multi-step process, and we're about three steps in. So, I just wanted to kind of give you an idea that we're still moving forward on that. And Sky Fiber isn't going forward until we get this. So, I have a vested interest in getting this done.
Thank you.
Thanks, Robert.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. All right, Brian made the motion. Pat, a second. All in favor? All right, very good. Thank you, everyone.